Well, the Sundays aren't that, Saturdays are as well.
Move it.
Yeah, yeah, we would hear basically you could see what you were missing. And then I'm going to be not doing what I.
Yes.
Yeah. Perhaps.
Do they, do they spencil on the suits?
What?
We said someone spencil that onto his suit.
They'll put it on anything, believe me.
Down in Pendleton, turn.
Yeah.
Well, I saw on Facebook Marketplace the other day where they were selling a Anderson City Councilman badge. I was trying to think of what bars that gets you into.
They're probably all gone.
VIP still up there.
We better wait till next month since Jeff's our attorney.
Oh, big crowd tonight.
Yeah.
It's anywhere on. Come on, I don't want all the people.
I think I remember them saying, was it kind of small like that last time? Hey. Okay.
Hey guys.
Here's the girl.
Hey.
Uh, the whole fake, yeah, the three older kids are out now. Yeah, Sam and Missy and I, they were going to two other couples.
Yeah.
There is a screen.
Cut, I go so darn early. You gotta go, you gotta go south. Barbers, uh.
Why do I keep doing that thing?
I know, I don't, and that's one of the things.
I already said one other time that.
I've been tired of two, three years in a row.
Like it's, there's just so much screen that's not gonna be used.
Yeah.
But I just wonder, I wonder if we got any monitors here? If that would be a new one or something.
Is Tampa south or it's like?
Cause there's just, yeah.
I mean, so, not on the zoom side of it, like what I'm seeing, I think it's crazy. And she goes to another popper. It's got a little bit of.
My wife and I were done, but we're not gonna say.
Do it again.
Mexican.
I haven't.
They said always have.
Okay.
Some of the Irish, there was a Spanish-American boy. The Irish community that lived in Texas.
I need it right now, I'm a little like.
Okay. Like all in like a moment.
Yeah.
And so they, a bunch of Irish women have fought for Mexicans.
This is your last one?
And they, they're. So that's why they celebrate.
I just, I just, I'm being all smart.
I need to drink my second.
It's like when you're talking, like, oh my gosh, so awesome, I can't win. I am, I know, cause for preservation commission kinda got to me, right? I was like.
I don't, I don't like.
Irish, Mexican.
And Phyllis even saying, she's like, can I even do that? I'm like, yeah, you can do it, you will do it though.
I love that usually that.
I know, I know. She's feeling the same way I'm feeling about my new job.
Yeah. So Casey, you are a project manager, right? Is that what it is? Okay. Or some people saying, would it be a part of some people's stuff? Yeah, we need to hire you as a consultant, that's what we just need to. Yeah.
That'd be awesome, that'd be fun.
Always, it was good.
I'm fine, I wanted to make sure that, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure people.
I'll get you.
I'm just out with her. I cover her back if anything.
I understand that one.
Have to figure out what you have to say.
Rachel or.
I mean, for her. Of course, I'm like, worrying about her all the time.
Oh.
Worrying about her since I was little, thinking about you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I can tell her, like, your strengths are different than hers, right? Try to do it differently.
Yeah, I can tell you.
What? I'm glad she has you.
Oh, yeah.
You can be a good therapist partner, cause she and I do like to do like.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, we can do that, yeah. Likewise to me back, so, and then we'll be like, hey doll.
I know, I know. And the plus thing is that I won't be around, you know, like, I told her, we should go get our drinks and stuff.
Yeah, that would be good, yes, yeah.
See my drinks again?
Yeah.
Don't touch me.
I don't touch her, I.
Come on, how are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Good, how's the boys?
You're so like.
Get fit?
He's good, growing?
Yeah, how, six months or?
Six months.
About, yeah. Okay. Oh, I give it a couple more months, he's gonna be crawling, well, no, probably maybe another month or so, he'll be crawling. And then he's like. So pull up. He'll be crawling soon. Well, Jake, he pulled up, never crawled until two weeks before he walked. So, weird, I thought, he's never gonna crawl, but then he was like, problem.
Which is hard to think that you're out there.
Yes, yes. I think he was just so stocky and heavy, you know, like. His PMI was like that big percentile.
Well, good luck.
You would be shocked to see.
How many times do you wanna say that in your life?
Oh my gosh, I mean, he just looked, no baby face, just, oh, it's like whole new first. Weird, yeah. Yeah, I know, yeah. He's changed really quick, really fast.
Six o'clock, uh, we'll start the. Nothing new for council meeting. Our March twelfth meeting, start off with, uh, Sid, please. Thank you. Chief Stewart.
Sure. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thing is, we have a singing, but we, uh. We need to draw one, I can read it.
You're like, play ball.
I have to do karaoke.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Alrighty. Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Jane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Chip Maab.
Here.
And we do have, uh, court. Uh, all of yous have a chance to pay, to look at the February minutes. Any questions or comments, Bob? If not, I didn't get a taken for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion of the second to approve the February meeting minutes. Roll call vote, please.
Robert Jones.
Here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Jane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Maab.
Aye.
Have a seat anywhere, guys.
I'm sorry to interrupt, we were just here to drop off, drop off, uh, document, uh, community service document.
Is it for the court?
Yes.
You, we can take it for you.
Yeah.
He died on his own. He died on his own.
We'll move on to third court.
Yeah, let's go in.
All right, all of you on the board have had a chance to look at or approve the claims that must have been February. I'd like to invite all of you to come up and look at the list. It seems like every time someone looks at that list, they come up with a way to save us some more money. So anytime, any of you're in the building, come up and look at it. Uh, as you see in front of you, the general fund is in good shape. I think that's all I have right now. Make a motion to approve the clerk treasurer's report.
So I got that.
A motion of second to approve the clerk treasurer's report. Roll call vote, please.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Jane Davis.
Yes.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
Chip Maab.
Yes.
Clerk treasurer's report is due. To start with the, uh, department reports, the fire department first.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's a little inside joke, twenty eight Jimmy, can't say but.
Well, sorry for your luck, but you're stuck with me tonight, Chris is out playing basketball. Uh, as you guys can see, from the report, we were up to fifty-five runs for the month of February, which is up sixteen from last year. We're on about the same pace right now for the month of March, month of March is pretty busy. Chris did want me to relay that he, there was a complaint about Dollar General, he went out and looked at that. I don't know what the results were of that, so.
There was a inspection done.
Yes, Chris went out and done an inspection, but I don't know his results, so he did not, well, asked me for them, so. That's all I got.
Any questions for pivot?
Are you at fifty-five already for this month?
Uh, we are probably close to twenty-five to thirty right now.
Twenty-four of them yesterday.
Yeah, twenty-four of the last, we're three days.
Crazy, crazy.
How many of them? Twelve or ever, how many of y'all straight four? Hold on, sixty-nine.
Uh, grass, probably three, maybe, I'd have to go back and look. And also, I think we probably had two mutual aid runs, two or three mutual aid with other departments.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Bulls.
Sit there, huh?
Try to show him a little respect.
Keith, you're up.
Fireman. That's all you have to say. On a more professional note, uh, county police department report. Total dispatched incidents, four hundred and forty-five for the month. Eighteen adult criminal arrests, two juvenile arrests, uh, nineteen crashes in our jurisdiction. Twenty-six warnings, thirteen code citations, and thirty-three code warnings. I also made mention that we began our training for the year, which we normally have a meeting with the prosecutor, and everybody comes together and we sit in that room and we listen, but because of COVID, we're now doing it online. So the guys have started those videos, which are horrendous. And, um, but we're getting our training done that way. Number two, what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, I did make comment in my, my report that, uh, we have started the hiring process for the one position that you've offered us, and, uh, which we deeply appreciate it, uh, appreciated that. And, um, what I've done is normally we have a line of officers, a pool waiting. This has been interesting because that pool has only been two people so far this time. I don't know what's causing that. I'd be safe to say it's a national climate and not a Pendleton climate. Usually we're a department that people wanna come to. Uh, one officer I mentioned, uh, that came and actually interviewed with me, he actually turned the position down. One reason was the department he's with, day one, they're giving six weeks vacation. I can't compete with that. And his wife has six weeks vacation where she works, so the wife told him, you're not taking that job. Cause they already had trips planned, et cetera. So different things like that are causing an issue with the hiring process. I do have a ten AM meeting with another guy tomorrow, but, um, different agencies, uh, for example, we've talked about just the use of the squad cars. Carmel allows unlimited statewide driving privilege. How do you compete with that? Fishers allows adjoining counties. So there's different things that are causing benefits from other departments that affect hiring process in other departments, so.
Just for matter of fact, what's, uh.
What's ours?
Yes.
This has never been discussed by the chief of police or the town council. Uh, it's always been left to me. And what I've allowed is the county of Madison driving privileges. And the reason I've even felt comfortable with that is the fact that we support each other. We support county, we support Alec, we support everyone. And when you're driving the unmarked or the marked car, a lot of people think that's a great perk. Well, it's not. You're in a car that says police on it and you're expected to act, even though I'm in a tee shirt and shorts, if I roll up on a crash or whatever. And when I say expect to, we do it, because that's our job. But we're also off duty in the car, so while it's a great benefit, it also has its drawbacks. With that said, I'm, one reason I've driven mine in the county is like ball games. If I go to a Pendleton ballgame over in La Pelle, and there's been times where I've had to assist even the buses to, to move around the parking lots, et cetera. Or on the way to somewhere, someone's tires blown, and we put the lights on. So currently, my rule is Madison County only. For example, right now, Sam Kroger's working a part-time gig down at Lucas Oil Stadium to his Big Ten start. And Chief Engle's over in Chesterfields in charge of the training or the security down there. And so the guys have asked, can I drive the squad to Lucas Oil? I'm like, well, you tell me why you driving to Lucas Oil, the taxpayer of Pendleton will benefit from that. And, cause that's what's gonna be questioned of. And so, but then again, it goes back to that competing with other agencies who allow different things. So I've kicked around, um, I'm not okay with it yet. Possibly you fill the car up before you leave, and upon return, you fill it with your own money, um, just as a benefit. Uh, one reason to go to Lucas in the squad car is security reasons. They, you can move into the area a lot quicker and easier being a policeman than in your pickup truck. So that's just different things we're weighing. And it's growing pains, you, we've never had those issues until now that we, again, have to compete with other agencies, so. Six weeks vacation on day one, that was a, that's a big one. And then, uh, you may have read the newspaper today, it's got a big deal, officers had an investigation of a, uh, teacher in our school system that we've arrested. It was posted in Pendleton Chatter, it caused a pretty big stir in our community. That person then apologized for that posting, which again, caused another stir in our community. I wanna assure everybody in the town and the council, we received a complaint, we did thorough investigation as we always do. It was then reviewed by a prosecutor and a judge, and warrant was issued. So we're very comfortable in our arrest, uh, we're also very comfortable in the school's reaction. They assisted since day one. Once we knew of the allegation, the school took the step to remove that person from the school system. So a lot of parents thought that the person was still in the school system, they were not, they were removed immediately when we had knowledge. And so the school's been top notch, prosecutor's office, of course, was great, my investigators did a wonderful job. Scott Bertram's done sex crimes now for fourteen years. So, uh, it was in the Herald or the Pendleton Times today, and there'll be a Facebook Pendleton Police Department release tomorrow. And one goal of that is simply, if there's other victims of that crime or any crime, to contact Pendleton PD. And that's all I got.
Let me, let me add a little bit there. The chief, I ask, before the meeting started, I went to the chief last month, three weeks ago.
Yeah, and the last one.
Uh, between Scott, Willie, myself, and the council, we, we really fought hard to get another officer. Bob is along with me, is, I know I've tried for over six years. And we've really done some moves and.
Number crunching.
Number crunching, and, and it's like I kept telling Scott, I kept telling the chief, it's gotta be reoccurring money. It can't be something, cause we got an extra thousand, two thousand dollars over here. It's gotta be something that's gonna be there every year we hire that person. I don't wanna have to lay anybody off any year because of COVID or anything else, so. Actually, we waited, Scott kept pushing me and I said, no, I wanna, I wanna see the numbers before we do it. So January numbers come out, and that's what I got with Willie and Scott, and then went to the chief. But, uh, didn't say nothing about it, cause I wanted him to at least have the initial draw with his guys, uh, about it. So I'm just glad we're getting one more officer in the hard fight.
Yeah, we've, uh, you know, we've made the argument for years, we're two point something behind mathematically, blah, blah, blah. At one time, you know, people in the community know trash dollars were laid aside, but once that number was crunched, we realized it wasn't enough to fulfill the promise. And it all goes back to reoccurring funds. And so we moved ahead and looked at those numbers, and that's great, I appreciate it. And, uh, currently your department is ten full time, which includes the one SR row. So then subtract, uh, administration, you're down to seven on the road. And, um, so that's where, with the three new housing conditions going in, I don't know if you've driven through them lately, but if you drive through them, it's sold, it's sold, it's sold, it's sold. So the town's desirable, people are coming here. In fact, I stopped and talked to each of the builders and asked them, is it local moving or new people moving? And it's a, it's a, that's a split between that, uh, people upgrading within the town and people coming to town. But then those people upgrading are selling their house, so then we're getting new people there, so. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Just growing pains. But thank you very much, you guys are excited.
Let's try to work a little, get a little more.
Yep, ten AM tomorrow, I have another interview, and, uh, I think what I'm gonna actually end up doing is actually posting it and helping it up, just to get a little, I've only had the two apps. And that's just for word of mouth, so I'm gonna open it up.
Are you, um, are you gonna, are they all lateral transfers that you're looking at?
In a perfect world, I would like an academy grad, that's turnkey, and in a perfect world, I'd wanna.
Which is a lateral transfer.
Yeah, lateral transfer. I'm sorry, your socks, uh, drew my attention.
We're with the professionals.
Yeah, yeah, well, it was an attorney, you know, attorneys and. But, uh, it, what he says by lateral transfer, an academy graduate, especially one in Madison County, they already know our computer software, cause we're all on the same one. So that's a, you just learn the town and cha-ching, bada bing. And the new computer system allows for GPS, so even if you're not from Pendleton, the map comes up. So it makes it a lot easier than the old days. But there's also that guy that would make a good officer, he's just not gotten hired, and he needs to go to the academy at some point, and maybe he'll be a good, good officer for the town, so. I'm open to either. Glad we'll make it a lot easier.
Good luck, chief.
Thank you, we're working on it.
I know, appreciate your job.
I can switch my ten o'clock phone with you tomorrow about nine thirty.
Uh, court, uh, the judge is out of town, so I don't think anybody here represent, go ahead, Aaron.
I don't have anything special to add other than what you see in front of you. Now that the weather's started to turn, we're gonna start focusing on some cleanup issues and things that we've put off when the weather turned bad on us in February. But other than that, nothing new.
Got that pool built yet?
Working on it, working on it, we're gonna break ground soon, I think, as soon as you write the check.
County's gonna donate twenty-five million.
Yeah.
At least.
Any questions for me?
Thank you. Rachel.
Me. All right, we had, Brett was really busy this month, he had thirty-one inspections in the month of February, which is more than one per day, since February was a short one. For the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, we're working on wrapping up our facade grant guidelines and application for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received from food and beverage funds. So we will likely be getting those out, um, in April for our building owners and business owners to start filling out. Um, our unified development ordinance, uh, we've been working on transitioning that project, um, over to Kayla, and we are getting our final timeline in place so that we have a good idea of when we can lift the moratorium. The way it's looking, I think we'll be comfortable saying that we can lift the moratorium at the end of June, but we will talk with you guys more within the next month, um, since originally it was April seventeenth, I believe, or nineteenth was the day it was gonna be really.
Nineteenth, yeah.
So we'll just need a little extra time on that. The redevelopment commission is wrapping up their interchange master plan, uh, that Kimberly Horn was working on. They're supposed to have a final draft over to staff, um, on the sixteenth of March, that we'll be reviewing. Eventually, that will come before you guys to take a look at, so as we get these final documents, we'll start sending them your way, so you can take a look at them and we can talk about them, uh, prior to coming to a meeting. Subdivisions, we had our pre-con meeting for the next phase of carrot blend today, so that's, uh, moving forward much faster than we all expected. And this past month, we've been working hard on that US thirty-six project, um, so we appreciate everyone coming in and taking a look at, uh, what the plan improvements are for that corridor. And tonight's my last council meeting, which is weird, so, um, I just wanna say thanks. It's been a pleasure working for the town, and it's hard to say goodbye, but here I am, so. Anyway, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
So we'll miss you too. And I wish you weren't going, I don't know how else to say it.
Just don't change your phone number.
She'll be appointed to MZA soon. So go ahead, if you can go to the first slide. So a couple of things, um, I know you all know, but. So a couple of things, I know you all know, but I thought we might get an official announcement. It looks like we're gonna get over a little over nine hundred thousand for the COVID rescue plan. I don't know the details. I, just before we started the meeting, I went and checked some emails from AIM, which is the association, used to be associations, the cities and towns. They don't have anything for us yet that they, they can pass down, see what our restrictions are. The other thing I wanted to start to talk about is a little bit of the work we've been doing on the cemetery. Yes, sir.
I want everybody to understand that nine hundred thousand is tentative.
Yes.
Okay, there's nothing. They just signed the bill this afternoon. So we got this note yesterday. So all that's tentative and it doesn't mean that we're getting nine hundred thousand dollars as we sit here right now. I just wanna make sure when it comes down to paper tomorrow that it's correct. Okay.
Right, we don't know the details yet. This is a heads up. Thank you for saying that. But it was the, the warning shot, what's coming. The, the other thing we've been doing quite a bit of work on and probably has not, we've not been visible enough on it is that we've got a planning committee internal on staff to address expansion or completion, I should say, or filling out the rest of the cemetery. You know, we've got the old part on the east side, the new part, what we, everybody calls the new part, although it's been in operation for a while. And then you've got the empty field that's farmed. So there's really three sections. We're gonna ask Ball State to do, use it as a senior project just to generate some ideas. Also, a goal with this is to look at the finances and set up a perpetual fund. Attempt to set up a perpetual fund so even after the cemetery's full, the funds are, will be generated to continue the maintenance. Rachel put together a survey on the cemetery. Actually, did Kayla do that? I forget. Kayla created it. Kayla created that, a survey to see what people are interested in then. For instance, a columbarium, if you could go to the next slide. I didn't even know what this was until we put this committee together. These are quite popular and the survey showed that columbariums are a place, because more and more people are cremated, is a place to put their remains. You can put, depending on the size, they can be a lot bigger than this. It can even be smaller. I think the, like the one on the far right probably has about, you put twelve cremated, cremated remains in there. You can get forty, sixty in a very, very small area. So there's a high demand for those sorts of things. Also, interest in natural burial, and we're not quite sure. We're investigating that some more, what the, what Indiana law allows, requires if we wanna do it. But we're beginning to look into that in response to what people are asking. And I know some of you have been getting questions about this. So we just wanted to let you know that there is a, the staff is actively investigating what needs to be done, next steps with the cemetery. Next slide, please. So we had a lot of attaboys that's not coming up well. But that shows, I like that photo because it shows multi-department cooperation to get the snow out of town after a big snowstorm on President's Day. So we got Pendleton Police Department, Mark Chief helped shut down the streets. That's Donnie there on the skid steer from the Park Department. And in the back, there, my guys on the backhoe dump trucks and we're pulling the snow literally out of downtown and moving into other places. So it was a team effort. When it was really bad, we had Donnie out, we're in the Park Department. The street and water guys pulled the night shift. And then when Tuesday came around, Tuesday morning, the electric department took over and we kept going. And I think if you drove anywhere else in the area, you'll see that we did a heck of a job compared to anybody else around. It was a heck of an effort and fortunately, there was no, there was no fire runs that night.
We're just getting ready to leave already.
Yeah, he didn't. But we kept the main roads even when, all the way up to midnight, we kept the main roads open so that there was emergency run. We kept going through at twenty o'clock, you know, thirty-six hours straight or more. So that's what I have for town manager.
Thank you.
Oh, can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. So I did have the architect who built the fire, who designed the fire station for us, come down and look at the building. There's some concerns with the town hall. Willie, Mr. Bowles caught this. It looks like that we may have some bowing out with the masonry wall to the front. So he came and looked at that. He was the architect that did the original draw-up for the plans that were never initiated when the town took over, bought this building from the bank. So he's very familiar with, with Pendleton. All right, so what we're, what I'm saying is we're starting to look at if there's an issue with the building.
Questions or comments on any of the department head reports? If not, let's go to new business. Ordinance twenty-one dash oh four, Economic Development Rider Ordinance. You wanna talk to that?
Either one.
Go ahead.
Get a little workout before she leaves.
Karen, I tell you the love.
There you go.
This ordinance, we wanted to bring to you guys tonight. We have, sometimes we get economic development projects that happen very quickly. And as a town, we should be as prepared as possible to offer any incentives to any large businesses that might be coming into town. We worked with INPA and INPA highly recommended that we put this ordinance in place so that if something does pop up at the business park or anywhere else in town, that we can move more quickly. This ordinance is maybe a little out of my comfort zone on explaining it in detail. But I do know that it was a formed ordinance that INPA did send over that communities all over the state of Indiana use that are into communities to help with economic development projects. So we did go through and make sure that everything was Pendleton specific. The rates at the very end of the ordinance are our Pendleton rates. Like I said, this just helps us implement projects faster and offer incentives faster if we do have a project that comes along. So if I don't know if there's anything I wanna add to that.
It's, it's for very large users. So it's a volume discount, basically is the language.
Has work been you negotiate with them as far as like volume discounts?
Well, it's like a pass through. They have, they have their incentive which allows.
So it's really for high, the high.
Real, yes.
Like a tractor supply or.
Yeah, in the ordinance, it spells out what, they define what a large user is. Although I see, I like to go sometime, but I haven't.
Do we have anyone now that would be qualified, like the school or?
Well, I would definitely pick tractor supply. Probably, probably the school. But it's, it's an incentive to get them to move here. It's not very distant.
So just renewed, nothing for, for tractor.
Any more questions or comments on twenty-one dash oh four?
Only comment I would make is if the current customer does expand large enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, that is true.
So they're not completely out, under existing conditions now.
So I can grow into this?
Yes.
It looks like it'd be exciting for them to stay here. I see they have seen a free supply out here or something like, like that. I'd say, well, if you think that's for new, what about the existing? Existing businesses, yeah. I see there are gonna come out. I think it looks good though. You ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion on first reading without, uh, where does, uh, twenty-one forty vote, vote?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for ordinance twenty-one dash oh four. Roll call vote, please.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Ab.
Aye.
Motion carried for the first reading. Okay, ordinance twenty-one dash oh five, post-construction ordinance.
Go ahead.
Okay. This post-construction ordinance, we had an audit that was done about a year and a half ago for our stormwater, our stormwater management in town. This was an area that the state said we needed to improve on is to have this post-construction ordinance. And this really deals a lot with the way that stormwater or the like erosion control measures that are taken on projects in Pendleton. This really cleans things up for us and gives us a clear outline of what our process is basically in the planning department on what our expectation is for contractors and developers when they're building projects in Pendleton. This helps us work more closely with the Madison County Soil and Water Conservation District. It outlines the whole process on what their role and responsibility is and what the town's responsibility is. Because right now, it's really unclear. I know they're supposed to review plans and if they catch, they have, they're supposed to come out and do inspections at certain points in time. But there's really just a, it's just not a clear process right now. So this really helps clear up that process and then gets us into compliance with the state as well. So we're just looking for a first reading tonight.
Will this be applicable to existing additions that we have going up now?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll be objective with this. I guess, definitely have my.
We just know for the council that the copy you have in your folder, your E folder is labeled draft with a watermark. There's been no change, there have been no changes from that. I, if I would like to pass this, I can get, or first reading, I can get you a clean copy, but there'll be zero changes from the substance that appears on your folder. That was just a clerical mistake on my part.
So the highlighted parts stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the highlighted parts are correct and the watermark with draft will be.
Yeah, okay.
Have we received any comments from any contractors, executors? Hope they did kinda work.
No, I think that everything in the ordinance is very commonplace. We worked with Commonwealth engineers on this to develop it. They've been, they're well versed in these ordinances. So it's nothing out of the ordinary. Again, it's just kinda cleaning up a process that's really not clearly defined at this point. And getting us into compliance, so two big.
So this just makes us seem compliant and builders and developers, this is gonna be a kick in the back or anything?
No, they see this everywhere and it also clears up the enforcement that's actually down with the county.
Any other questions or comments? Not, I'd have a motion and a second, please, for ordinance twenty-one dash oh five.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one oh five on the first reading.
A second. I have a motion, a second. On first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash oh five, roll call vote, please.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Chip Ab.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Check, check on assistance, please. Looking on this ordinance, will there be something we wanna retain? We wanna do the suspend the rules for a second reading after we got a lot of construction going on. Springtime erosion is a factor, particularly when you get springtime rains. I can see the value of, we'll agree, we'd have to be mad at us to suspend the rules and go forward with this. I think it helps protect the community. There's a lot of value in that.
We would make a motion to spin.
I'll make a motion that we should suspend the rules for a second reading.
A second.
Do you agree with this, Scott?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to spit, uh, suspend the rules second, all favor? I think we need to roll call, please.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Ab.
Aye.
All right, so now I need a motion for the second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash oh five.
Make a motion that we adopt the second reading for ordinance twenty-one oh five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. The second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash oh five. Willie?
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Ab.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. Next thing on new business, ordinance twenty-one dash oh six, amended traffic code, stop signs.
So did you bring this forward, chief? Was this your thing about, your idea about the stop signs run by the elementary school?
To have it or not to have it?
To have them.
No, not the portable, not the portable.
The ones in the alley.
The ones in the alley was brought up when we were looking at the area.
Yeah.
And then I sent you the email or the text about, there is a law that if you're leaving an alley, the road you're entering into has to right away.
So, so we went ahead and this allows us to put stop signs there at the four ways in the, in the alleys. If you look at between Elm to the High, between East and Pearl, there's quite a network of alleys running through there. And there's four four-way intersections and kids come to the elementary and the intermediate school through those alleys. And so I felt it was a safe issue that we needed to probably put stop signs there at those interchanges, or at the intersections. And then as those alleys enter Pearl and as they enter East Street. Kids just walk down those alleys right down the middle and as you can imagine, somebody coming through those alleys, this would be a way to control that, control that traffic and at least remind them they need to stop.
So this ordinance, the way it's read, or written, we should say, the only place that we're okaying, maybe, I guess I shouldn't say it that way, for the portable signs is in front of the school on East.
Affordable sign in front of the school, yes, it's also there.
No, no other place in there.
And then the permanent signs as the alleys enter East Street or they enter Pearl or where the alleys cross in the middle, which I think is actually the most dangerous spot. Because you, when you drive down an alley, it's not always apparent that you're right on a crossing another alley. And there's many kids, you know, schools start in the dark in the mornings. So I just think it's a good idea that we get those signs posted.
So like a matter of record. The school understands it's gotta be a legal sign.
Yes.
Not just any old sign that meets the state requirements. I mean, we've talked to them about all this, right?
Right. In fact, we went and bought this, a sign for them. Their sign was too small. I looked up the standards. The portable sign just has to be a foot off the ground and thirty inches in diameter. And theirs was less than thirty inches. So we went and just gave them one of our signs. And it's a highly reflective sign.
Okay.
Actually two, because it faces both ways.
Chief, are you in to vote with this?
I agree a hundred percent with the stop signs in the alley. And the stop signs coming out onto East and Pearl. Just to control and really saturate that with some safety stuff. The stop sign at the crossing, I believe, is covered under Indiana law from. The stop sign at the crossing, I believe is covered under Indiana law from crossing law, that as long as you have a crossing guard there, they have a legal right to stop traffic. I believe Mr. Schill in our discussions, um, he's using it to slow down traffic. And so I drove over there today and if you come down East Street from Madison, the pedestrian crossing signs are the old school yellow ones. Not the high visible neon yellow of today. And they're set back off the road on whatever pole was there to handily nail it to. So my opinion, and I've told Mr. Schill this, he needs to make East Street loud. And my point to that is, we need school painted on the road. We need those signs more visible to the driver. The, the mothers and the teachers and the people we deal with on East Street, their mind isn't about driving. It's about getting the kid to school so they can go to work. And so they're looking at where they're going to drop off their kid. They're looking everywhere but where they should be. And with these signs, that's a wide road. They need to be tighter to the road to draw attention. If you come in from State Street, there are some newer neon yellow signage for the crossings. But after you get past the intermediate, there's nothing between that and the next crossing. And there's cars parked along there, so even the one crossing sign is possibly blocked by, uh, frontier trucks in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, so the stop sign out there, again, there's Indiana law for crossings. And schools are obligated to take care of their crossings. That's why they have the guy that does the State Street crossing. So I just don't know if having a human there as a crossing guard or a stop sign there is anywhere we should be playing. But I'm good with it either way. I mean, if someone runs the crossing guard, hopefully they'll get the plate and we can write a citation based on his witness statement and he'll have to go to court. Uh, if someone runs the stop sign and there's an ordinance and someone gets the plate, we'll be doing the same thing. So I don't know how much more the stop sign does compared to the crossing guard as far as that goes. But I think the whole street needs more attention, some louder signage. And I'm talking the neon yellow stuff. Cause the ones, the ones there now, I can't even describe the color. Well, about like the, uh, on the flags up there, that orange, that.
It's almost yellow.
So.
There you go.
Yeah, that yellow.
Yeah, this yellow is what it needs to be.
It might be bright.
I, I think another bigger issue with East Street is that the use of East Street has changed over time. Whereas the buses used to park out along East Street, um, now they have their own lot that they pull off into. And now it is like a landing strip out there. I mean, and that does increase your, you know, when people are driving on a road that's wider and bigger, you automatically drive faster. If you're on a street that is a little more narrow, it feels like you're enclosed, you tend to drive slower. So the way we have designed East Street currently and the way it's being used, it's just outdated for what the use is. And so in the future, maybe looking at something called like a road diet, which kinda narrows the road down a little bit, let's make it more pedestrian friendly. So it looks like a more pedestrian area rather than a, a landing strip. I think those things would help, um, accomplish some of these goals. I know that's a long-term project, but there are short-term fixes like Mark is talking about. But I think long-term, if we wanna be good partners with our school district, we really should be looking at doing a, a road reconstruction project on East Street at some point. And it's such an important corridor because it helps connect our schools to our park. And that, that road just really over time has not been, um, kept up as it should have been, so.
Cause you know what, at one time they were talking about putting big speed bumps in there.
What, we are gonna do that this summer.
That is still okay?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna elevate the crosswalks this summer.
And that was one thing we worked at, sorry, go ahead, Will. A, a couple of years ago, we did work with the school to consolidate the crosswalks, cause there were crosswalks and there were ramps that led to nowhere. There were ones that were not ADA accessible. So, you know, a couple of years ago, we did work with both principals. We narrowed it down to two crossing points on East Street rather than five or six. So that kids were getting directed to safe spaces, safe crosswalks to cross at. That made sense. Um, yes, the signage did go up, but it is hard for people to see the signage because it is on the other side of parking. And there's really not a good place to put those signs where they are visible to tr, to vehicular traffic because of the way that the road is designed.
Can it be put on the sidewalk right there with the school with the sign on both sides? I'm just asking, is that?
We'll look at it.
I would say what, what you, you get with, uh, the principal and between your input and the chief's input. I didn't just change the color of the signs when I go and just send her a list of the color.
Yeah, the other, the other thing too that we're gonna upgrade is, uh, it was not happy with the striping that was done. Um, that was where school started. So next year, we're gonna, we're gonna upgrade the quality and the, uh, it's, to me, it's not white enough and bright enough. Looks almost silver. So, um, we may get that done by contractor that specializes and that sort of thing too. So there are some, there are some things that we, we planned to do this summer.
You, you take that and just keep us informed, okay? Just sitting here listening to you last month, listening to the chief last month, and we're talking about it again this month, so let's, let's just keep it rolling, okay?
We, just so you know, what, what I'm starting to look at is, I think project number four on stormwater is in that area. And so some of those traffic enhancements could be, or could be all rolled into one project to improve the stormwater, uh, the sidewalks and the alleys. And, um, so I, I just haven't figured out how to do it yet, so I haven't formally proposed anything to you. But, um, we're, we're, uh, we're starting that process. Actually, we have started the process.
Now, the school still has a crossing guard, you know, to cross East Street, not only State Street, right?
I haven't been down there for so long because of. I, I don't know if there is a crossing guard on East Street.
They have kids and, uh, teachers or staff that go out. And what they've experienced though is that parents, they may not always stop at the crosswalks if there's kids in them. So they, they've had some near misses, I think, on, they just don't wanna see a kid getting hit. So I think they need all the support that they can get to try to make it feel like a more pedestrian area rather than, you know, four lanes of cars.
I don't know how, I understand the portable stop sign, but I think they need to look at doing something more than just doing that. I mean, the other stuff, I mean, we got pedestrian walks, we got crossing guards out there. They're not stopping with those there. They're not gonna stop with the stop sign in the road either. I mean, I don't know. I, I like to, I mean, what's your?
We're trying to get from all angles.
When I was third grade crossing guard, tapped at Poston Road, I don't know.
That's how it all started.
Yes. One thing I've seen, and I've even seen it with our adults on State Street, cause I give complaints about the way they do it too, is they forget to lead with their sign. And they just choose to step out and go, and by that time, I'm doing thirty miles an hour and I can't stop. So we've had those issues. And the kids down on East Street, I don't know what training they've had. We used to have training. But you lead with your flag and your sign. So you put the flag down, then you walk out. But you don't do it as a car's coming. You, you of course, watch traffic, find a clearing, do it, hold it, and then the kids cross. So I think some of the near misses have occurred when people just stepped off the curb and, oh, you, you know, I'm here, you need to stop. Well, I'm four, four thousand pounds moving at thirty miles an hour, so, uh, down the hill from Madison, so. Uh, but they have the adults out there. Mr. Meduzzi goes in the morning at the elementary and Mr. Schill's out there. Jeff Taylor's out there. They've even got an officer from Excise who chooses to park her car there with their lights on in the morning while she's dropping her child off, so.
And having our school in our downtown area is so important and I think anything we can do to encourage them to be comfortable there and stay there is good for our kids. Cause if that school gets moved out to where the middle school is, our kids are not gonna be walking to school at all. Um, and I think having kids, having the ability to ride their bike or walk to school is good for health reasons, social reasons, just a whole slew of things, so, you know.
You never walked to school as a kid, did you?
I had to walk a corner on my, this is my left side.
I did, in the snow.
In the snow.
Has the Madison Avenue closing, or is it, has it increased or decreased traffic on East Street or?
Uh, the principal says insignificantly. He probably says, he says just a little bit, but insignificant, like, it's not causing problems. Just so you know, Agent Ross Jackson pointed me, at that intersection. Six graders never would listen to me. That's when I started lifting weights too, is that when, when the fourth grader wouldn't listen to you.
Right, right, it's darned fourth graders.
Oh, let's get off.
Any more questions or comments about amending this traffic code for the stop signs? If not?
I, I, I mean, I still, still question the temporary. I mean, if we're only gonna do it till school's over?
Yeah, they pull it in and out.
I mean, no, and then next year, we're not gonna have this little temporary sign, cause I just don't see that's gonna work either. I think we really need to look at the signs, the painting on the roads.
That's what he's gonna do.
I mean, I think we need to amend the ordinance to.
I don't know. I think it's, uh, whether that principal wants to use that stop sign or not, I mean, he's, they're out there every day controlling that traffic. If he thinks he needs it, which he does, then I think we oughta, oughta support it.
Well, I thought the issue that we tabled at last meeting was because we thought we needed to ensure that the standards of the sign were ones that Mark could enforce.
What, yeah, oh, there were, no, there was state law, there was, there was a problem with state law. Jeff looked into that. In addition to that, I looked up the standards for portable sign, temporary sign. It has to be a foot off and thirty inches in diameter.
Yeah, the thing that drew police attention was the fact that a stop sign was being left in the middle of the road without an ordinance attached to it. Now, if the ordinance says that the stop sign can be written, a, a, a citation written on the stop sign, because it's meeting legal requirements, that's fine too. If it's gonna be taped, left all day, then that's a decision that needs to be made. If it's gonna be removed, which is what he's been doing since our last conversation, then, uh, again, there is law on the books for a crosswalk. So the stop sign law and the crosswalk law is just redundant.
It is.
It is. But, but Schill believes that the visible stop sign is slowing traffic. Chief Mark Farr believes that if we make the area loud, coming in from Madison and everything else, that will slow traffic. And the other thing, when my officers do go down there and write, and run radar, it's teachers and parents, every time. And so it's kinda like the neighborhoods that say everybody speeds. I'm like, well, you're not a through neighborhood, it's your neighbor. So, God love you.
I just wanna make sure it's just a temporary till we get the signs, the painted roads. That's, I mean, that's what I'm worried about the long-term, not that, let's just do this for now and then forget about it three months down the road.
I think one of the things, uh, the chief brought up and Scott did too, but Mr. Schill wants it. And he's the one that's responsible for them kids every day.
No, I, I trust Eric, he's a great guy.
If that little sign, you know, is legal, I don't have, personally, I don't have a problem with it, okay? If someone's putting it out there, taking it in, leaving it all day, most is consistent, that's all I'm saying.
Is that what it's, or is that the plan, to pull it when they're done in the morning and leave it all day?
Yeah. No, to pull it. I mean, that's what he told me he was gonna do.
He told you what?
That he pulls it.
Pull it.
Well, he does now.
I just wanna make sure we're really working on this, looking at this, the other options, where they don't have to keep pulling it. That way they don't have to have somebody pull it in and out. Let's make it loud and obnoxious.
I've blown my sign budget out of the water already. I've run too much in, so what the heck?
Well, how much is, needs to be school budget?
That's something else we gotta look at, yeah. We need to work with the school system on that.
For a long time, they used the police department to do their crosswalks. And then I educated them and God love them. They now have a cross, so.
Okay, ordinance twenty-one dash oh-six, amending the traffic code stop signs. Do you have a motion? If not, we'll close it.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-one dash oh-six.
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a first and a second motion on ordinance twenty-one dash oh-six. Willie?
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Now that's first reading, right?
Correct.
And we need two on ordinance.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and do a second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Okay, so now I'm asking for a motion for ordinance twenty-one dash oh-six, amending the traffic code stop signs, second reading.
Make a motion, twenty-one oh-six, second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second.
Roll call. Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Ordinance passed. Okay, next on the new business, ordinance twenty-one dash oh-seven, I gotta be honest, I don't understand this. It says to amending ordinance twenty-one dash oh-four, which we just done, yeah, something, no, is it?
It's, it's, uh, cumbersome, but it, it's correct in what it tries to do. And I know it got too late and Mr. Eskyn will try to explain it to you the best we can. Please. So basically, for the stormwater fee, um, it exempts, um, the, the town, the township, the library, the park, and Madison County. And one, the, one of the reasons we wanna do this, all you're doing is churning tax dollars, right? So, um, when I got the database from the county and was going through and cleaning it up before I submitted it to, for the property tax rules to collect the fee, there is parcels everywhere. It is chaos to try and figure it out. There are town, township. Um, and so it makes it cleaner and easier. If you'll notice, the, the state's not on there because I think there's a lot of reformatory property that ought to contribute to the stormwater utility. Um, so the state, but there is quite a few state parcels, then I'm sure they're gonna come knocking on my door when they get the fee and they're gonna tell me these are right-of-way parcels. But I cannot figure, I cannot figure it out.
So on this, Scott, where's this Fall Creek Township? Explain that to me.
So if, I think they have one piece of ground and I don't know, I can't remember where it was. They do, they do, they, they do, they're responsible for the cemetery, but somewhere they do have a small piece of ground. And I, mostly, I wanted to make sure it was cleared because the park and the library are, um, um, a joint, they're an entity that's a joint entity of the town and Fall Creek Township. So there, there's probably some park property that's actually under the township.
Okay, now my next question. Okay, we've got town of Pendleton, the library, the fire department, Falls Park, Madison County. Why wouldn't we put or exempt or give a break to the schools?
To the schools?
I'm just asking.
That's up to you.
No, it's not up to me. It's a question I've gotten. When I read this this afternoon, first thing coming to my mind is what we've been working on.
Yeah. Well, just like the state has some properties that are large contributors to the stormwater situation, the school is a huge contributor.
Yeah.
The high school is an easy example to look at. Um, we've got the elementary. And we are, we are gonna have to do a lot of maintenance. There's a lot of problems around the high school. There's gonna be a lot of maintenance. They do get, they do get an eighty percent discount as it is.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Okay, yeah. So.
I mean, we've talked about it, but I wanted in the record, that we just didn't forget the school. We just didn't forget the school.
No, we, no. So, it's a, they get an eighty percent discount, just like any other nonprofit, so.
And to that end, counsel, if you read the, the ordinance in front of you as presented, if you notice in the, in the therefore, in the ordained portion, under E, the South Madison Community Schools are listed, the town manager, and I literally drafted this, intended for you to consider, you can add and subtract as you want, obviously, but it was our suggestion that the, the six that are included, that, that you just read, would be the only ones included in under the new one point seven E at the bottom, that South Madison Community Schools would be omitted. I, I, like you originally, put them in, but took them out when I saw the eighty percent allowance, it was already in there.
Okay. But this twenty-one dash oh seven doesn't amend twenty-one dash oh four?
It, it amends twenty-two oh four, is that was the ordinance that was the whole, was the stormwater ordinance that you passed. And that had the rate structure in it, including it had twenty, twenty-one dash oh four had that section one point seven E that talked about exceptions from the fee. So, your, last month, you passed an, an ordinance twenty-two one oh four that listed specific exemptions from your stormwater fee. And this ordinance would amend twenty-two one oh four only as to the exemptions you're granting. And you would be granting, in addition to public rights of way, you would also be granting exemptions to the local government units that are listed under the whereas. So, you're making a tiny tweak, just a tiny tweak to twenty-two one oh four by saying, we're gonna add a group of parcels that will be exempted from our stormwater fee.
Okay, then twenty-one dash oh four, we voted on last month.
Yes, sir.
Then why tonight, correct me, very first thing we voted on tonight was ordinance twenty-one dash oh four, economic development, right?
Oh, he's saying there's a, a number?
Number.
Something's not right, was the number going?
Vote on same number twice, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, I will look, see what the, do we know what the number was of the stormwater ordinance that passed last month? It should be in our minutes.
Twenty-one oh?
Twenty-one oh one.
Twenty-one oh?
Twenty-one oh one. Originally, uh?
Twenty-fourteen-ish.
Twenty, twenty-fourteen dash three. All right, well, that was, that, I, I apologize, counsel, that was, if I made that, probably it would leave, limited a lot of confusion. So, you are, what's that? Twenty-one oh seven will be an ordinance of the town of Pendleton, amending ordinance number twenty-two one dash oh one. In any reference to twenty-two one oh four throughout, the ordinance will change to twenty, twenty-one dash zero one.
Okay.
Sorry, no.
You're true.
I know.
You dug that one.
Yep.
Okay, so, on this ordinance, twenty-one dash oh seven, with the amendments that you just talked about, I'm gonna call them, there's corrections, it's actually twenty-one dash, twenty-two one dash oh one.
Yes, sir.
That's, that'll change, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, you're about in that paragraph, the school, the school is mentioned, or the South Madison Community School is mentioned in the amended section one point seven, that should've been amended as well, I did bring that up in the cop. So, E would read, except for, one, public rights of way, two, parcels owned by the town of Pendleton, Pendleton Community Library, Pendleton Fire Department, Fall Creek Township, Falls Park, and Madison County, and parcels less than two thousand square feet, there's only no exceptions or exemptions from the site.
Karen, you scratch that on, make copy, okay?
I'll get you a clean copy in the morning. With the, if, if the council asks.
And just for my clarification, twenty-one oh one from last month, it did say in that we were replacing the original fourteen oh three.
Yeah. That's where that shows up, yes.
That's probably where.
That was the whole bulky title of that mess we passed last month.
Thank you.
I did see a little snag on the, the children coming about the schools, all that, the, I see where they might think, well, wait, let me exempt these others that are listed, totally weird that, which are not the schools, I understand it's like eighty percent, the reduction on that, but I would think the principal will think, they say, we, we're a government body, tax dollars paid for the schools, even tax dollars paid for the fee, I see where they would be wondering, what are we doing?
Well, there's two, there, there was two reasons, um, one for returning taxes, but the other reason, I clearly could tell which ones are the school parcels. If you, if I, on the database, if I had, um, there's parcels listed for the town, all over the place, the county, all over the place.
Can't tell.
Yeah, you take a county bridge, that parcel's listed in the county.
So, it gets back to the definition of school property, you've got a.
Right.
Clear definition.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look it up, which, yeah, augments the problem.
Councilman Jones, that was one of the reasons that we put in the ordinance, that administrative cost were one of the major reasons to do that, just the, the chase, the cost benefit of the, the tiny parcels versus, so, you know, it, it's an argument judgment like anything else on the school, but that was one of the proposed rationales, anyway.
Yeah. I, I can see the logic in any of this, it makes, makes sense.
Any more questions or comments? If not, I'd have a motion for twenty-one dash oh seven, amending ordinance twenty-one dash oh one, to move.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, rule call.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Let's, if that's not a problem, let's leave that till next month and get the clean, is that all right? So, okay. All business, ordinance twenty-one dash oh three, access management and control, second reading.
I don't think we've had enough ordinances tonight.
One more. Are you trying to do it, get all this done? There you go.
This one, of course, is a second reading, so you guys have had this introduced to you already, um, at our last meeting. Brandon Candera is here from Madison County Council of Governments, and so is Ryan Phelps, so if there's additional questions, they're available. Just for a refresher, this is to limit access on our functionally classified roads such as our major arterials, so that we don't have, we can start having less and less traffic issues on corridors like State Route sixty-seven, or, um, any new ones that we have that are, it's, it's all tied back to our thoroughfare transportation plan, our thoroughfare plan map. So, with that, I'll let Brandon explain it way better than I did.
Good evening, can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right, good, I'm Brandon Candera, I am with the Madison County Council of Governments, and I'm the project manager for the Pendleton Thoroughfare Plan. Ryan, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, Ryan Phelps, I'm the principal transportation planner with the Council of Governments as well.
Tonight, we are completing the second reading of the ordinance and hopeful adoption. This ordinance received a favorable recommendation from the plan commission last month. I want to pre, briefly go over what is in the ordinance again, this might be a repeat from the February town council meeting, but I wanna make sure anyone in the public that wasn't at the February meeting can learn more about the access management and control ordinance as well. This ordinance was drafted using the NDOT Access Management Guide, and similar access control ordinances have been adopted statewide. The purpose of access control is to improve the overall safety of a corridor by carefully inspecting access to land adjacent to a roadway. The ordinance, ordinance outlines access considerations to be reviewed as part of the site design review process that the town has already established. In rare cases where needed, the planning director or plan commission can grant exceptions, variances, or other changes to the ordinance when going through the site design review process. It is good to have this type of flexibility in the ordinance, though it shouldn't be needed very often. The intent of the ordinance is to provide and manage access to land as it develops, while preserving the regional flow of traffic in terms of safety, capacity, and mobility. The standards in the ordinance apply to private and public land along road rights of way that are under the jurisdiction of the town of Pendleton and NDOT. Dependent on the size of a development, a traffic impact study may be required, and this can help decision makers like the plan commission or town staff to determine what access is appropriate for a development. The access management and control ordinance refers to the thoroughfare plan map to determine what access control will be applied based on road functional class, which is the hierarchy of road operations. Application of the access location and design standards of the ordinance requires identification of the functional class on which access is request, requested. State-owned roadways have the highest access control applied to them to maintain vehicular movement. I know this is a very big document, and there are a lot of moving parts, but the town and our staff have had the opportunity to successfully test it with proposed developments in Pendleton over the last couple of months, and are confident of its integration into the review process. At this time, I can provide more information about the ordinance and an overview of the nine sections within it, if you would like, or I can open it up for questions.
Counsel, any questions for Brandon?
Have any comments from the public of this at all?
No.
No, um, I will note that, so, when NDOT came through originally, maybe a year and a half ago, to start talking about US thirty-six, with the public, we did have a lot of conversations about access and safety concerns and vehicular movements, um, that didn't necessarily directly influence the town's decision to start working on this ordinance, as we had already been talking with Rachel and Tim before that. However, there have been a lot of public input received generally on access and safety issues on transportation around the town of Pendleton.
This kinda ties in with some of those earlier conversations relevant to that.
Yes, yep, yeah, it definitely ties directly into the thoroughfare plan process. Typically, this sort of ordinance is actually a recommendation following a thoroughfare plan, however, since we know that it's desperately needed here, especially on facilities like US thirty-six, we didn't need to go through a thoroughfare planning process in order to identify if we could go ahead and start that work ahead of time.
Would you anticipate if we do pass this, the second reading, that you would have to amend this periodically as time goes on, this traffic, if you get, if you need more growth, would that be relevant to that?
It shouldn't really need to be amended from, from here on, unless there's, basically, no, uh, the amendments to it should come through the thoroughfare planning process. What I think Brandon was kinda discussing with Rachel referenced was that the thoroughfare plan map is referenced throughout the access control ordinance, it's based off of the functional classification of the roadways. So, as growth comes, and as that impacts the transportation system within the town, then you would continue to update your thoroughfare plan, and when you update your thoroughfare plan and the thoroughfare plan map within it, then the access control ordinance would be referencing whichever new roadways within it.
So, it should be a perfect marriage, book of cards, right?
Yes, yeah.
Now, if standards change, such as, you know, if we, I think we have a, the driveways that are mentioned in this being certain widths, if that ends up at a certain point in time not being a best practice anymore, then we would go back and amend those specific measurements and things like that. But right now, everything is basically best practices on driveway widths and how driveways are handled and, and things like that.
Yeah, we had a lot of information from the UDO process as well, to help us update some of those standards that are given in the baseline NDOT document.
And just to give you a, a recent example of how we would've used this if it was in place, um, when we were talking with MI Homes, you know, I was really concerned with, am I having a, a road cut off of State Road sixty-seven in the original area that they had proposed? I didn't have any documentation or, um, you know, a good tool to use to say, no, our community doesn't want this. I knew from my planning experience that this would've been a bad, um, choice for us, but I didn't have any documentation or ordinances like this to help me say, no, you know, we've had our public input, we've done our research, we've done our homework, um, to say, and have that in my toolbox, so this, this will help us in the future with planning projects, too.
Any other comments?
There's pretty much something we need to do to allow for growth, if we foresee what's taking place now and going in the future.
It helps us manage.
You might be ducking a row, or you're gonna, you're gonna bite the bullet later on.
Yeah.
Helps with consistency in the newer subdivisions, too. Another example, just today, we received a request, um, for a, in addition to a home, and, and within that addition, a guy requested a thirty-six foot wide opening to his, for driveway in town, uh, because he has a boat and it's hard to pull, blah, blah, blah. So, as she was saying, we, that comes up a lot, people requesting different widths and stuff like, we just need something consistent on paper, we can say, no because, or yes because, in here.
Ordinance referred to.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Exactly.
Comes up a lot more and a lot, you and everything.
So, what you're saying, the system's working, or the process?
Well, we need a process, that's what we need.
Tie that up.
Yes. Any other comments? If not, I'd have a motion for ordinance twenty-one dash oh three, access, access management control, second reading.
Salute with second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Rule call vote, please.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Motion carried, good job. Thanks, man. Okay, next thing on the old business is, and I guess I should've checked this out, appointment of Amy Parker to the BZA, is that, uh, a council appointment or executive?
Um, I think they're both.
I think it's mine.
Yeah, they're council. Council, full council appointments, they're full council appointments.
Let's look it up, but I don't think the Urban Forestry would be, I may be wrong.
Yep, give me just a second. Urban Forestry would just be town council president, so municipal executive on that one, and then the other one is BVA?
Yes.
I am not sure, I think it got that spot, well, hold on, uh, yeah, I think it was deleted off the town's website.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this, that way I know we're legal. I make a recommendation for Amy Parker to be appointed to the BZA, and, uh?
Carol.
No, I don't, it's just do one at a time, let's do a motion and a second, and we'll do it with the council, okay? So, I'm asking for a motion to appoint.
I make a motion that we appoint Amy Parker to the BZA.
Okay, I've got a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second, rule call.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Babb.
Aye.
Amy Parker is on the BZA, and everything's up to snuff with everything, that's a mistake I made last month, I'll hold my hand up, I've done that. Carol Hannah to the Urban Forestry is my appointment, and for a matter of record, she's on the Urban Forestry outside of the city.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Comment? No comment related to these appointments, but, I don't have a comment related to the appointments, but I would like to speak at the end here once we're on it.
We're on it.
All right, thank you. Good evening, my name is Edward Valenti, I'm with Decker Lawyer, Mayor, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owners on the north side of Thirty-Eighth Street, out during, on the proposed Sixty-seventh Street extension, coming down from Anderson. I came before you last month. I came before you last month, as some of you may recall, seeking more information on that, and you all helpfully directed us to the Redevelopment Commission. We attended the Redevelopment Commission, Rachel helpfully provided us with some additional information, thank you very much. And it was informed to us that Anderson is really the driving force behind this project. And while we understand that, we still have a few concerns that we'd like to bring before the council. The primary concern being, you know, the property owners are citizens of Pendleton. They reside here in Pendleton, they're citizens of Pendleton, and they want to know why no one from their representative government has reached out to them and asked them what their thoughts are on this road extension, and how best the town could advocate for their property rights in dealing with the city of Anderson. And as of yet, at this point, I believe, and I may, I don't know if it actually clips Mr. Farr's property or not, Chief Farr here, it's closed, it's closed, but I believe it is solely, the only property owner affected by this road in the entire town of Pendleton would be our client. And nobody's reached out to them, and we'd like to know what steps this council will take to advocate for the property rights of their citizens. I think they have no idea what you're talking about.
I, I got an idea of what he's talking about, okay, but I'm gonna back up, and like Rachel's told you, Scott has told you, and I think Jeff has also told you, that is being driven by the city of Anderson.
The city of Anderson.
Let me finish, okay? And we have input, but it's in the planning stages, and it may not even go there, that you're talking about. That it's all pre-planned on down the road, and if we had more information and said, okay, it's gonna go right there, yeah, someone would probably, probably get ahold of your client, okay? But there's been meetings, public meetings, city of Anderson's done, we've done them here. About, I think, Marissa, you can help me on this, if I'm wrong, just say, Jeff, you're wrong. But Foster Branch, people had a lot of input in that when they were talking about the road cuts, and just back to what we just passed in the ordinance, road cuts coming out onto Highway 38. And it was all by public meetings, so...
Well, I understand that, sir, the maps that have been presented did not appear in a vacuum. These discussions were had regarding these maps, some of them at public meetings, which our client has attended, and some of them have not been presented at public meetings, so we are wondering if they were not informed at a public meeting, where they might have been informed. Additionally, when this road, if and when it is created, appears, it will not be the city of Anderson that seeks to condemn my client's ground to take this land, it will be the town of Pendleton. And so we would like to have discussions with the town to find the best place to put that road in. So again, we'd ask, what is the best forum then, as clearly the information is not percolating properly through the public meeting channels, which there has not been a meeting since 2018, and yet new maps, phase one surveys, we've had surveyors on our ground without anyone contacting us. Who, how is our ground being advocated for, how are our rights being advocated for by our legislators? How should we best speak to you, to convey to you?
I think you're speaking right now, but I'm gonna reemphasize, the city of Anderson, all this is proposed. I'm wrong, tell me, but nothing is set in stone. That road may end up being on the side of Ice 69, and whoever your client is won't even be involved, but there's been public meetings on all this.
Our clients have attended the public meetings that have been noticed on all of this. Additional information has been created since those public meetings, we are wondering where that information came from.
Edward, would your client be happy with setting up a meeting to speak with council members directly about the project?
We would love to do that, that is, that is what we are begging for, we would love to do that, thank you.
Okay.
I think, though, what you're asking for, I keep telling you, is that Anderson manages the whole public process, not the town. So if there's a city engineer, you need to talk to him, we've told you that now several times, and keep repeating it in meetings, that if you want to know what steps that you may have missed, go to them, because they manage the project.
We are in communication with the city of Anderson engineer, and we are pursuing that process as well. We also want to make sure that we are in communication, in direct communication, with our elected officials to move forward and protect our interests, which is presumably what elected officials do for their constituents.
If I could correct one thing that you've also said, is that Pendleton may not be the one that comes in and exercises eminent domain. Your land, that land that you're representing, you'll probably have, most likely, have developers approach you and offer you a lot more money for that land, have this road not be put in. So that's the most likely situation to happen.
May or may not, but I have my instructions, you know, to hear, so, look, I'm moving along.
I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm...
I think...
What was your suggestion, Rachel?
If he, if his client would be happy to set up a meeting with you guys directly, or a couple members directly, the council email addresses are available on the town's website, so I think that would give you guys the opportunity to send them an email directly to set up a date and time that you can hear his concerns or his client's concerns.
I don't have a problem, there can only be two of us, okay, can't be for the whole council. I don't have a problem being part of that, but I'm gonna tell you, in that meeting right now, I'm gonna tell you exactly what I just told you. The city of Anderson.
I appreciate that.
I'm just trying to be upfront with you, okay, and not waste your time.
I understand, sometimes our clients want us to come forth and move forward with the process.
But I think his client wants to be heard on what their concerns for the project may be, so that if you guys can influence the project in some way, then you would have the opportunity to take the lead.
Set it up with, who wants to?
I'll, I'll be glad to.
Good, good, with me and Marissa.
Okay.
Chief Harp?
Mark Farr, property owner. 299 was 132. I came home the other night, and there were new pink flags on the corner of my property, at the 132 connection on the back corner. And of course, new stuff, it drew my attention, but it's not my land, I know it's not, so, I'm like, okay, somebody's been out here. Then I touched base with Bill Brown the other day, and he goes, well, you know where the road's going, and I was like, well, I've seen the map, because I was in the early meetings, which was interesting, I was in the early meetings as chief of police, not as landowner contingent to the project.
Get close to it.
Yeah, but I was loud about, I also own properties, I don't know that. But he showed me, because we had three different avenues of where it possibly could go through, and he was showing me where Bill Brown's argued with them about doing something different, and I said, I wasn't involved in that meeting, and then...
And this is the selected corridor.
And then the pink stickers on the edge of my property, definitely was like, okay, well, what's going on now out here? And I guess that's the concern, is communication of touching my property, or their property, or Bill Brown's property, has just turned up in the air. I understand the whole Anderson-driven, I also understand if a big project came into Pendleton, it could be motivated by them, if they're willing to do a road. So, I guess we're just kind of in the world of, well, there's orange stakes on my property, but I don't know anything, so, it's kind of unnerving. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to meet with the Skaggs and you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Scott will get that set up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Mark, so you know, surveyors have right of entry.
Well, they were on his land, not mine, but it's just as a, as a neighbor, I was like, okay, what's going on?
Just, just for the record, we have confirmed that the appointee was a council appointee to the BCA, you've already got your three on there. And so, the, this one's a council, the council already voted, but just for the record, it was a council appointee. Okay, good, shall we go down, Brian? Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or anybody online? Nope, okay. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Your name is Blue Moon.
Yes.